All right. I will go ahead and call to order this meeting of the City Council. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified on the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours prior to this meeting were distributed to the City Council prior to tonight. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espinola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
All righty, thank you. Tonight, we will have the invocation delivered tonight by Pastor Jim Anderson, who is a retired pastor of Cornerstone Church of Yuba City. And that would be followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Libby, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge after the invocation? Thank you. Please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty God and kind Creator, we bless you for bestowing upon us the three prevailing privileges of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. You have woven these benefits into our lives so seamlessly that we now stop what we're doing to intentionally thank you. Let us not overlook the women and men who oversee our city, assuring that it is safe, prosperous, and a pleasant place to live. Good Father, we ask you to endow those who lead and serve with wisdom and strength, so they may find enjoyment, friendship, and success in their worthy tasks. In your name, amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation. Salute the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chaffin, there is no report from closed session, as we did not have closed session tonight. We move to the Agenda Modification Approval. Please note that Consent Items 12, or excuse me, Consent Items 13 and 14 will be voted on separately. And then, the staff has provided additional revised attachments for Consent Items 9 and 11, the First Level Managers Agreement, Mid-Managers Agreement Salary Schedule, and the website has also been updated and hard copies have been made available in the lobby. Anything else on the agenda tonight? Okay? Then the agenda will stand with those modifications. Tonight, the first presentation that we have is for Colonel Church. And Colonel Church, we'd like to ask you to come forward and join us, and then, but if you would like to go to the podium, you can dress everyone first, and then we'll meet down here in the front.
How are y'all doing? Good? Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city county leaders, thank you very much for having me out tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and just introduce myself to the members here of Yuba City, give you a little idea of what we're doing still at Beal, a little bit about me, what we're doing at Beal, and then, from there, right, I guess I'll come down to the front and we'll, you know, have another little conversation. So, my name's Mako Church. I've been serving in the Air Force now for about 23 years. This is my second time back at Beal. I was here from 14 to 16. And now, right, I'm back now as both the Installation Commander. So, I've got about 23,000 acres, right, of beautiful Northern California real estate, followed there as well by also being the Ninth Reconnaissance Wing Commander. Little background about me, so that you guys kind of know where I'm coming from. I grew up as a military brat, so I've lived all over the world, if you will. Went to three high schools in four years, graduated the University of Kentucky, did ROTC there in Kentucky, and then, I had two dreams when I was a little kid. One was either to be a professional baseball player or to be a fighter pilot. I saw the F-15C demo when I was three years old at an Air Force base, and I thought it was the coolest thing on the planet. And so, I tried to play baseball. Lo and behold, when I got to college, found out I really wasn't actually good enough to play Division One baseball. And then, right, joined ROTC, and then went that path, and then, right, ended up flying F-15Cs and F-22s. And then, I've also got some time in the RQ4, the MQ-9, and now, coming back into here. Before here, coming back to Beal, I was in, I did three years in the Pentagon as a, essentially culminating as the person that is going to brief the Secretary of Defense on a fairly routine basis, on how the Secretary wants to move forces all around the globe. And then, I did a year in Afghanistan as a commander in Afghanistan and shut down the entire operation in Afghanistan. That was quite an experience. And then, back into the Pentagon, and then finally out to here. I'm married with two wonderful daughters. They are truly the light of my life and the absolute thing that makes me want to continue to serve. It is a true pleasure and a blessing to wear the cloth of our nation. When you see us in our community, in your community, I really hope that we represent the best ideals of which you could see from members of the military. And if we're not, then please, by all means, let us know, and we'll be more than happy to correct it, because it truly is an honor to wear this cloth, because at some point in time, we are going to hang up the cloth of our nation, and we will no longer be able to do what we do, and we will, right, go back into members of our community and then can be, continue to serve, right, as members in our community. I want to thank the members here of Yuba City for all of the support that you have given Beal over the years, and I truly look forward to a very enduring relationship and fostering a stronger relationship with all of the men and women, if you will, of Yuba City, as well as Yuba County, as well as all of the surrounding folks that, right, we interact with at Beal. As an example, right, 55% of our population lives in Yuba County, and then about another 35% to 40% live down south, and then a smattering all around. So, you may not know that your neighbor is in the military or works on the base. We've got about 7,000 airmen, if you will, with a big A, that work there at the, at Beal. And we truly do want to be good members of your community and look forward to serving with all of you. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Colonel. If you want to strike down here at the front. Now we're on. It's great that you've brought your family here to be a part of our community and call Beal home, and we hope after your time is done, that you will call Yuba City home, because a large vast part of our population is retired, or they have served, as I did, earlier. So, there's a lot of Beal here in our community. But on today, not only do we want you to introduce yourself to the community, but we want to present you with a proclamation for the 75th anniversary of the U.S. Air Force and the 80th anniversary of Beal Air Force Base, in which was also known as Camp Beal. Whereas, for 75 years, American airmen have excelled as they execute the Air Force mission to fly, fight, and win, delivering air power anytime, anywhere in defense of our nation. And whereas, airmen are called to innovate, accelerate, and thrive, as the U.S. Air Force and Department of the Air Force approach their 75th anniversaries on September 18, 2022, airmen will always be there to provide America with the air power it needs to defend the nation, deter or defeat our adversaries, reassure our partners and allies, and help diplomacy proceed from a position of strength. And whereas, airmen continue to push technology and cultural boundaries, which make America the leader in air power and space power, innovation is an integral part of training and employing squadrons, developing capabilities, and continuing to move toward an even more effective air force. And whereas, from the inception 75 years ago, the U.S. Air Force and Department of Air Force have excelled at keeping pace with rapid changes in technology and in the demands placed on the Air Force's five core missions: air and space superiority, global strike, rapid global mobility, intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance, and command and control. And whereas, Camp Beal opened in October 1942 as a training site for the 13th Armored and the 81st and 96th Infantry Divisions. And whereas, in 1948, Camp Beal transferred from the Army to the Air Force, and today, Beal Air Force Base is the home for the U-2 Dragon Lady, T-38 Talon, and RQ4 Global Hawk. Beal Air Force Base covers nearly 23,000 acres, is home to more than 4,500 military personnel. Beal Air Force Base continues to support the Yuba Sutter area by shopping, residing, and participating in the local community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby recognize the upcoming 75th anniversary of the U.S. Air Force and the 80th anniversary of Beal Air Force Base and their contributions to the Yuba-Sutter community, done this fifth day of July 2022 at the City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to, now, I'd like to invite Melissa Sanchez, Council Advocate for Casa de Esperanza, to come forward. All right, it's a pleasure to have you here tonight, and you guys do an incredible job at Casa de Esperanza. I think we can all rally behind the hard work and the great work that you guys do for our community. And with that, we'd like to present a proclamation for the Sexual Assault Awareness in the City of Yuba City for July 2022, because you guys really do a lot of good work in that area, helping people. Casa de Esperanza has led the way in addressing sexual assault by providing services, responding to emergency calls, offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault. Staff and volunteers of sexual assault programs work year-round to support survivors. Casa de Esperanza serves to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence. Casa de Esperanza requests public support to bring real hope for freeing victims from the tragedy of sexual violence, to create a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. So now, therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, the Mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, that in recognition of the important work done by, or done by sexual assault programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 that "No Means No." Women and men working together can make a difference in the fight against sexual assault and gender violence in our community, proclaim this fifth day of July 2022.
Thank you so much to you all, Yuba City Council. I'd like to thank you all on behalf of Casa de Esperanza and our clients, and we look forward to your guys' continued support, not only from here, but the community, and I'd like to also thank the community for your continued support of our programs. Thank you very much.
Next, July is Parks and Recreation Month, so we'd like to have Mr. Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director, and the city's Park and Recreation staff, please join us up front, please. On behalf of the entire city, I can tell you before I read this, that we are all just indebted to the hard work that you guys do. The amenities that this community is able to enjoy, and the great things we have here in the city, you guys are kind of the silent giants in the background that just keep everything moving. So, before I read this, I want to go ahead and say, from myself and the City Council and all 70,000 residents, thank you for all you do. Let's go ahead and give them a round of applause. Now for the tongue twister. July is Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas, Parks and Recreation is an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the Yuba, the City of Yuba City, and whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas, time and nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit, and Alzheimer's. And whereas, Park and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, senior sitter, senior center, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas, Parks and Recreation is not just a TV show from the past. We all remember that, thank God. And whereas, Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas, the City of Yuba City recognizes on behalf, recognizes the benefits derived from the Yuba City Parks and Recreation divisions. And whereas, the Yuba City Council would like to thank all the city employees and volunteers for creating and providing a quality of life in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire City Council and the City of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month, and doing so, ask that citizens of Yuba City use and enjoy its parks, trails, open spaces, aquatics complex, senior center, and the plethora of recreation programs offered in our city, done this fifth day of July 2022 at the City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California, and in these chambers. That's always the fun stuff, when we get to recognize the different people in our community, and especially this last group, the hard work that they put in. So, that's really amazing. So, we're going to go on to Public Communication, Agenda Item 4, Appearance of Interested Citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We have one written request, and that is from Mr. P.R. Joel. You'll have five minutes, sir, and I have three speaker cards. Do I have everyone's cards that wanted to speak tonight? Okay. With that, Mr. Joel, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and the members of the council, as I was here the last meeting, this would be my sixth meeting, so far, nothing has been done. As I was talking at the last meeting that we had met up with Mr. McIntyre and Mr. Chaffin, and we agreed, we looked at the criteria that you had set up to name that park under Dedar S. Baines. He does not meet any of those, except for the one that comes out to as a background check, and which is fine. Now, just to go back at it and try to look at it, of the job that the City Council and the Mayor has done, to my knowledge, that Mr. Carm S. Baines, as a supervisor of Sutter County, has met up with all of you to have his father's name put on the park. Now, none of you had told him that, hey, your father does not meet the criteria that the name should be put on. And you all agreed with him to have that name put on. And I asked time and time again, that you have made a mistake, let's correct it. I have not heard anything from anybody. We had to make up the appointments to meet with Mr. Chaffin and Mr. McIntyre. And when we talked with Mr. McIntyre, we went through the whole thing, and then, right at the end, he said, "The department usually picks the name." And my remark was, this time, they did not. It was Mr. Carm S. Baines that picked the name. Now, he's trying to go through with it, you know, of not doing your job to tell him that, hey, he does not qualify. But why do we have to hide all these things in numbers or places? You know, this was passed in September 22, 21, 21. And then, in December, it was being named after his name. Now, I still go after, they're saying, hey, Mr. Dedar S. Baines does not meet the criteria of the park that you set up. Now, since we have not heard anything from anybody from this office, yes, we're going forward to stop this. Now, which way we can do, I guess we have to do it legally. Since your department cannot answer any of our questions, no one has sat with us to say, hey, okay, now this is where the mistake is, or say, hey, this is where the right mess is. There isn't. You go through the criteria one by one, he does not meet it. And why that we had to hide the name of Mr. Carm S. Baines, who brought the name to the City Council? And he probably met with all of you, and yet, you did not tell him that, hey, your father does not meet the criteria. And yet, you went along with it. Why? Because he's a supervisor of Sutter County? Did he bully you? I don't know. I don't know. These answers will have to be, these questions will have to be answered later on, whether it is legally done or illegally done. So therefore, I still request for you to do the right thing, which is not to name that park under his name, but otherwise, yes, we will be going into the legal actions of this. So, with my time, I think it's about to be up. I won't go into any other details, because there are too many to say bad things about Mr. Dedar S. Baines. And my file right now is over two and a half inches thick, and it's growing on Mr. Carm S. Baines also, that how many bad things that he has done. So, if it comes to, yes, we will bring that, and every single one of them is true and is a fact. So therefore, I still say, do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Sukraj Palma. For the record, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Sukraj Palma. My address is 9850 Sheldon Avenue, Live Oak, California. And no, I'm not a resident of Yuba City. I live in Live Oak. I've lived there my whole life, but I am a member of this community. I have a business here, and my kids participate in the local rec leagues here. And I'm here to speak in behalf of the naming of the park. I support the name, Dedar S. Baines Park. And I get that there's anger over the fact that criteria wasn't followed, procedure wasn't followed. I understand that, I respect that. I don't know whether it was or not, but I think you, the City Council, have discretion in doing what you do, and I think you exercise that discretion in naming the park as such. And if you were to take up a motion to reconsider the naming of the park, I think you also have the discretion of changing that criteria. And I would submit to you that if Mr. Dedar S. Baines doesn't meet your criteria, nobody in this community does. He's given so much of his time, so much of his wealth, so much of his energy, back to this community, that it would be a shame that we didn't name a park after him, just because we didn't meet the city criteria, if that was the only reason. You can go anywhere on this globe and tell people, especially of Indian descent, that you're from Yuba City, and they'll ask you if you know Dedar Baines. I mean, he did that. Those are his accomplishments. He's given so much to this community, it would be a shame not to name a park after him. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Balbir Sohal. Please state your name and address for the record, and you would have three minutes.
My name is Balbir Sohal. I live in Yuba City, 1859, Alissa Drive, Yuba City. I just have a couple of questions. I've been following this thing going on in social media regarding the naming of the park, and I just have a couple of questions. Does this park have a design flaw? Is it the wrong location? Or is Mr. Baines' name going to restrict anybody from entering the park and joining the park with their family and friends? If not, it seems to me that it's just personal. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. We will go to Raji Tumber. Please state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Raji Tumber, 354 Lindsay Lane, Yuba City. I'm in support of the name to be changed, and the reason is, in the history of the leadership of Mr. Baines, starting at the temple, before the Baines leadership, there was unification, there was joint decision-making, there was respect amongst the committee members and leaders. And then during his leadership, Mr. Baines' leadership, with the progression of increasing committee members, and a lot of people siding with Mr. Baines, whether they're related or connected somehow, it became a leadership that was very one-sided. And this created animosity. And this created animosity with other folks that were trying to be more progressive, trying to have the financial books shown, trying to improve the temple. The temple wasn't getting improved. There were promises made for a school to be constructed. That didn't happen. There were promises for a lot of things for improvement at our sacred Gudwara. And after many, many years of frustration on our part and many, many other people, other factions got created, factions that just were frustrated with Mr. Baines' leadership. And instead of unifying our community, that leadership broke up our community and created factions and separation. And there was no strong leadership in the positive sense of being progressive and uniting us. So that's why you see tonight, the Dedar Baines support, and then the people that want to see positive progression, someone that represents positivity and respect, and a name that represents that, somebody that is inclusive, somebody that would care about anybody at any station in life from someone that was leveled to him, to people that worked for him, and they got disregarded, the people that worked for him. And I find that that's kind of inhumane, not fair, and it hurts me that I am saying these things, but it's the truth. And people here, everybody knows what we followed in those years, but have moved away from that to have somebody that represents respect, honor, integrity. And that's the name that should be on that park.
All right, thank you. Next speaker would be Mr. Jim Whitaker. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
I live on Perry Street in Southern California, and thanks to my wife who moved me out there, I had no say in it, so just wanted to let you know. State that for the record. So Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council Member, it's always nice to follow my sister, Ms. Tumber. I mean, I have a lot of respect for Raji and the Tumber family, as well as P.R. Joel, good people in the community, very active in Kiwanis. And so I just want to start by saying that this is not a personal statement against them. It's just what I feel as a former leader in this community. But so, growing up in this community and attending school, you know, Mark and I will attest to this, and it's probably Wade will attest to as well, when we were going to school like 40, 45 years ago in high school, we heard a lot of disparaging remarks, racial remarks against the East Indian community, against Black people as well. And so nowadays, you just don't hear that anymore, you know? We've kind of grown as a community, and we've had, you know, we've broken down those cultural barriers and, you know, had these cultural acceptances in our community. And so by naming this park, Dedar Baines, you know, it's going to show for future generations, you know, cultural acceptance. I think Mayor, you said it best when, at the exception of the dedication, was that this park could have been named, you know, 20 different people in this community, you know? But we chose Dedar Baines. Dedar Baines has been a great friend of my family for numerous years. In 2002, he mentored a young supervisor, and he kind of like told me different things about myself, but he also stated that, one of the number-one things I'll always take away from him is that he said, "Don't pick sides, don't get involved in temple politics." He said, "That's the worst place you can be." He goes, "Let us take on the temple politics. We have differences, but they're not personal differences." And so he'd call me from time to time and say, "Hey, I support this guy's project, and even though he's not on our side in temple, I'm telling you, this guy is a good guy and supports this project." He's been providing a lot of families jobs in our community and people that came from low socioeconomic status. And so a lot of people benefited from Mr. Baines and working for him. He's donated a lot of land, businesses, and educational facilities. And so I would just like to say that, you know, Dedar Baines, the naming of Dedar Baines as a park, I think is going to be a really good thing for this community. He's been a strong advocate for as many years as I've known him. And I will also say that there's been other people in this community that have come from the East Indian community, people like the Tumber family, the Joel family, the Palmas and the Baines. They've all given land. I don't know if you know this, but real quick, Tumber family, where the new Mormon temple sits, Rahar Tumber owned that land. And if he saw that today, he would have been very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make any comments on anything not on the agenda? Anyone else like to make any comments on anything not on the agenda? All right, then I will, I'm going to ask one thing this evening. Mr. Chaffin, if I can ask you to clarify some things. One thing that when you and I spoke about this is, you know, I'm just going to speak from the heart for just a minute as I turn it over to you. This community is better than this. And so tonight, I would just like you to recap, because there's been a lot of things said over the past six meetings or seven meetings or so, that quite honestly are inaccurate. And I would like for you to just legally walk us through the process of how did we end up here today? Because I will tell you, this community is better than this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There do appear to be a lot of questions and legal issues associated with this. And just for purposes of clarification, I want to let everyone know that the City Council has inherent authority on its own to pick a park name without any criteria whatsoever on as little as 24 hours' notice. If the City Council wanted to have done that, they could have. They did not. Instead of September of last year, they did a noticed hearing asking for input, community input, on what would be good criteria for naming a park and how it should be named. And this was an unnoticed meeting. It was noticed early. It was posted online. It was made available by YouTube. It was available for the public and the comments to come in at any time. And they adopted, after consideration of all these items, criteria for naming a park in an open and transparent manner, so it was clear on what basis had been named and why the names had been selected. So as a preliminary, just as a preliminary kind of background, the council could have gone down a different road. It did not. It set a criteria, it set a policy, and it did it in a very public way. The other thing I've heard over the last six or whatever number of meetings is there's been a lot of statements saying that, well, there wasn't notice, that this was done secretly somehow, that it wasn't done properly. And one thing I've discovered as an attorney, everybody has a different view on what is adequate notice. What may be adequate notice for one person is not from another. Some people want personal invitations mailed to their house. I don't know. But in order to resolve that concern, the state legislature has determined, as a matter of law, what is notice? And they did that in something called the Brown Act. And the Brown Act says, "You've given adequate notice if you have posted notice outside in a public place, your agenda, 72 hours in advance for a regular meeting and 24 hours in advance for what's called a special meeting." So under that background, what actually happened in March, when the naming issue came up for the very first time, was that notice was properly given. And I also want to clarify that the application for the naming of the park was received from the community, and it was the only application that had been submitted in over a half a year since the park naming policy had been implemented. The only one that had been received by the city during that period of time. So almost a half a year after the adoption of the naming policy, the city received a request from the community to name the park, which was heard at a regular City Council meeting on March 15th of 2022. Again, the city clerk posted the agenda almost twice the amount of time what was required under law. Additionally, it was posted online, so anybody that was interested could have gone online and looked for it. The meeting was open to the public. As you know, the City Council meeting, they love people to come in, they invite people to come in. We're always happy to have members of the community here. Although not legally required, the City Council also streamed the meeting online, so people could view it for those who are not available to come here. There was an opportunity provided to the public to comment on the petition that had been received by the city. Two members of the public got up and spoke in favor of naming the park. This was greeted with applause. So if you go back online and listen, you will hear that many members of the community, and I remember this day very particular, many members of the community applauded during that period of time. There was one member of the community who did get up and say that, well, I think it was four years ago, the City Council may have made a commitment to name it something else. But that same person also clarified that Mr. Baines has, quote, "done wonderful things for the community." There was also a letter of support requesting the naming of the park name that had been signed by multiple people, and that's in the agenda packet that's still posted online if anybody wants to go look at it, March 15th, 2022. Now, after listening to this public comment, giving the opportunity for the public to comment at that time, the City Council then approved the naming of the park consistent with this policy, and then posted a video of it. Now, there's some questions, people are saying, well, you know, is this really consistent with this policy? There's all these different things. I want to be clear, there are seven criteria in the policy. Close reading of the policy says you only need to meet one of the seven criteria. For example, here, I'll just read a couple of them. "The individual has made acceptable exceptional contributions to the City of Yuba City, including financial gifts or public service." Or, "The individual was a resident of the City of Yuba City for over 20 years." Those are the criteria. You just need to meet one of the criteria. So notice was legally provided. It was exceeded. It's been posted. It's been available. It has been there. The other issue coming up is this concept of a motion for reconsideration, that long after the fact that you can reconsider what you've done and change things. If we were to do that, and I want to be clear, as a matter of law, this would be a violation of the established rules and procedures. And the reason for that is, the City Council has adopted what's called the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. They're not the Roberts Rules of Order, they're the Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And the Rosenberg's Rules of Order specifically say, "A motion to reconsider must be made at the meeting where the item was first voted upon. A motion to reconsider made at a later time is untimely." In other words, any motion for reconsideration as to the naming of the park needed to be brought by no later than the close of the regular meeting on March 15th. It was not. There was no such motion in the record, and again, you could go to YouTube and look at that. Notably, it was not until several meetings afterwards that some members of the community started talking about reconsideration. But again, it must be a council member at the meeting where the vote occurred to make the motion for reconsideration. And there's a reason for this. The reason is to provide finality. So if you approve a contract, you don't want six months later to have that contract somehow rescinded because the council decided to reconsider it. The rules are set up to bring finality and to ensure that after debate, after an opportunity for public comment, after an opportunity for consideration, that a vote is taken and there's finality. Because if this were not the case, you could have a minority council member bringing up the same issue again and again and again at subsequent meetings, and there wouldn't be basically an end to it. So this would defeat the purpose of finality. And I've heard some other things as well. I just also want to clear up as well, I've kind of heard the word "legal challenges" and lawsuits tossed around. I do a little bit of that in the background from time to time as an attorney. And I want to tell you that, you know, citizens are free to seek redress in the court systems. Anybody can try to sue for anything. That's what keeps these attorneys driving the nice cars. So they love that. But I just would like to note that there's something called the Separation of Powers Doctrine, and I'll try not to get into it too deeply. But basically, it says, "City councils are not judges, and judges are not city councils." You have a separation of power, and you have different duties or authority. So as a matter of law, courts will defer to a city council's decision unless it was completely arbitrary or capricious. So if the city council decided to grab a dictionary, open it up, and point to a random word, that would be arbitrary and capricious to name your park, I don't know, abattoir or recalcantum or troglodyte or some weird word that you pointed to in the dictionary. That's not the case that we have here. So courts are likely, if there is any basis whatsoever, to support the council's decision, Separation of Powers doctrine says they will defer to the city council. And then finally, I just, from time to time, I read a statement to the public, just as kind of a reminder. And it's what I call the defamation, the libel and slander statement. And just as a reminder, it's not protected speech. I'm not advising you public, but I'm just saying, it's not protected speech. And I just want to read my statement that I've said previously. "By way of reminder, members of the public have a right to address the City Council at regular and special meetings. The right to express one's views in a public place is fundamental to a free society. The right is not absolute, however, and speech such as slander, which violates another person's right or which violates another person's right to privacy, may expose the speaker to personal liability. The fact that there is a right to address the City Council should not be taken to conclude that the city agrees with or condones the statements that are being made." Finally, this is what's called a limited public forum, which means the city can legally impose time and other constraints on speakers. So I just wanted to state that. I usually state that about once every six months. Where in July, it's a good time to state it. But just in conclusion, all legal standards for notice were legally complied with. The City Council lawfully exercised its authority in response to a community request to name the park. A motion for reconsideration at this time is untimely and would be legally inconsistent with existing rules and procedures. I hope that addressed everything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. That helped bring a lot of clarity to, I think, a lot of concerns that we've heard over the past six to eight meetings. So with that, unless there's anything more from anyone here at the dais, then we will move on through our agenda. Seeing none, thank you for all those who spoke. We welcome it. At each meeting, we will move now to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Note, tonight, items 13 and 14 will be voted on separately. We'll wait for the exit.
Mr. Mayor, while you're waiting, I just wanted to note and remind everyone that you read a statement earlier about items number nine and 11 being supplemented. So if the council were inclined to approve the consent calendar tonight, that would include the updates to items nine and 11 as well.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, we're going to take Consent Calendar Items 5 through 12. 13 and 14 will be handled separately. Is there any comments on the consent items tonight, items 5 through 12? Any comments? Any comments on Consent Calendar 5 through 12? Hearing none?
And Mr. Mayor, you can actually do items 13 and 14 for comments as well, if you're inclined. Just do them all at once.
Okay. Any comments on 13 or 14 as well? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move for consent items as listed with the removal of 13, 14, and items updated nine and 10.
Have a motion?
Oh, pardon me, 11, thank you.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Espendola, and a second by Vice Mayor Kirchner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. We will now move to agenda item 13, which is the lighting and landscape maintenance district, number one, fiscal year 2022-23 annual levy initiation.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I must recuse myself from item 13, as that affects an area that I live.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Is there any additional comment on agenda item 13? Hearing none, back to the council for comment or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adopt agenda item number 13?
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Espendola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We need to get Councilwoman member. Okay. While that's happening, we will go ahead and move to agenda item 14, that's the lighting and landscape maintenance district, numbers two through six, for fiscal year 2022-2023 annual levy initiation. And with that, I must recuse myself, as I do reside in those lighting districts, so I will be excused. Mr. Vice Mayor, you have it.
Any questions on agenda item number 14 from the public? Seeing none? I'll bring them back to the council for motion.
Through the vice chair?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, one of those titles, thank you, sir. I move for the adoption of lighting item number 14.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Espendola, and a second by Councilperson Boomgarden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if I may for a moment? So before I have people get up and leave, I just want to say thank you to the bargaining units and for the representatives and employees that are here tonight to represent the employees, because this is monumental for the bargaining units and for staff, and I just want to thank everybody that participated in the process, and to have it done by July 1st, I don't know, and now we'll have to, I don't know if we've ever had the bargaining units done by that time, and so just huge appreciation to the bargaining units, to the employees, to council, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you guys for being here. It's much appreciated. We'll move on to agenda item 15, the second groundwater well, award for construction of below-ground facilities. And I know this is wrong, so...
So Mr. William Jow is presenting tonight.
Oh, all right. William, you have the floor, sir.
So I am here today to give you a presentation about the second groundwater well project, and we're going to be talking about a recommendation for awarding construction contract to begin phase one. So some quick background about the second groundwater well project. We received an award for, in the amount of $750,000 from the United States Bureau of Reclamation to construct a second groundwater well at the water treatment plant. So the project began with collecting information, data, to develop a California Environmental Quality Act document, and that information was shared with the United States Bureau of Reclamation, where they prepared a National Environmental Protection Act document. And so both have since been completed, and design's been underway, and we're ready to begin construction, the first phase of two, which is constructing the below-ground facilities, and then the second would be construction of the above ground. So on May 18th, the city began soliciting bids for the project, and on June 9th, the bid closed, where the city received two bids. You can see here the breakdown of the bids that we received, two of them total, where NorCal Pump and Well Drilling, Inc. was the low, responsible, and responsive bidder. To go into some more details about the fiscal impact that this project will have, contract administration will be performed by Public Works Department staff. West Yoast and Associates have previously been contracted to perform critical hydrogeologic and engineering services during construction of phase one, and so the total estimated construction cost for the project is roughly $1.2 million. And currently, there is $4.15 million available to construct both phases of the project. Some details about the environmental aspect of the project, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and filed with the State Clearing House, as well as posted for public comment on May 23rd. Staff received comments from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. Staff worked with the city attorney's office, thank you, Shannon, for addressing those comments in the form of refinements, which are included as appendix F in the initial study, as well as attached to the proposed resolution presented to you today. If you'd like to see the initial study as well as other information about the project, you can visit the website at yubacity.net/secondgroundwaterwell. So in conclusion, Public Works staff is recommending city council adopt a resolution to award a construction contract to NorCal Pump and Well Drilling in the amount of their total bid, as well as adopt the initial study and mitigated negative declaration. And that would conclude my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions? All right, we'll go to... Go ahead, if you want to make a comment, or... Okay. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none, back to the council for comments or action.
Through the mayor, I, William, great job on that presentation, you did so well. This whole groundwater situation is so timely and perfect in the work that we need for our city, and the contract to be local, too, is really an extra great plus for our community. It's going to get tougher for cities and municipalities or regional for water, underground, groundwater wells, and we're kind of skidding through that right now, and this is perfect timing. The whole team, all of you, are just fantastic, but I'm so proud to see you in the presentation. Love the team, you all do such a fantastic job, and we can't do the work as a council without having an amazing treatment water staffing and engineering and contracting with some really good contractors. Yoast is one of the best, and then locally hiring folks here. So super proud and excited that we're going to do this. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words, and glad to have your guys' support.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Real quick, thank you for the presentation, wonderful job. I know it's not easy to get up there all the time, but well done, and as Councilwoman Espendola, it's nice that we're able to keep stuff local and take care of a very important project to the city, and again, but supporting not only our people, but those folks that are going to be participating in this project. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anything, Mr. Vice Mayor? All right. Any action by the council?
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adopt the resolution, would takes the actions following, do I read them out, chief, city council? A and B.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Espendola, I have a second by Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. And to repeat what they said, nice job, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
What was that number on slide four?
Which one?
15, right?
Close.
You're good. Thank you. All right. All right, we'll go on to agenda items 16, future agenda items. Is there anything that the council would like to discuss with the city manager tonight to come back in a future meeting? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to reports communications, and we will start with our city manager's report. Ms. Langley?
So I just want to say William did a fantastic job. I also just want to note, the engineering firepower that you have in this room tonight is so impressive, between William, Josh, Kevin, you've got Ben up here, and I also want to introduce our new deputy public works director in engineering, David Gianco. David, if you could, raise your hand. And so like I said, the engineering firepower that we have in this room tonight is so impressive, and what an excellent team. There's a couple engineers that aren't here tonight, so we'll acknowledge them as well, but thank you, thank you all for being here tonight. Lot of conversations today about 4th of July, and they have not been good conversations. And so I'm sure that at a future meeting, we'll be discussing the 4th of July, but I think it was, as Chief Alexandria gave you some stats, and then also Commander Runyon in relation to calls for service, and the number of citations, and structure fires, and vegetation fires, it was a rough, rough evening, and so, you know, we will, I'm sure we will have future conversations about that. So thank you.
I'm sure we will. So, thank you. Councilmember Espendola?
Thank you, Mayor. Very quick, Center Animal Service Authority, my colleague and I, Councilmember Boomgarden and I serve on this together, and we approved the budget, and I was selected as the vice chair. We're from city council member gag, so thank you, and my partner over here supported that, thanks. The part of the 4th of July, and I will not use too much of this time, because, again, to my colleague here, but the 4th of July children's parade was just phenomenal, amazing, great, great opportunity, the best weather, we ordered the best weather, thank goodness, and, but all of the, I don't think there wasn't any department not touched by some work in that, and so I just want to thank the community, and actually, all the cute little kids that were dressed up and ready to go, and it was a little dangerous with the little bicycles sometimes, but thank you to, I love the hot dogs, the hot dogs are my favorite, food and the music, but yeah, we have some work to do about the fireworks going off in all directions, and our chief and our team was doing their best work last night, but it was challenging, very challenging. Thank you.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last couple weeks, had the privilege of attending a swearing-in at the PD. It's always humbling, but also quite, I don't want to, exciting's not necessarily the word, but it's good to see people that are interested in coming into law enforcement right now, and so it was, it was a nice ceremony, and we've got some new folks here to protect the community, and I appreciate them wholeheartedly. As Councilwoman Espendola talked the SASSA meeting, the Center Area Animal Services Authority, a lot of discussion about their big involvement in the animal cruelty case. I think there's going to be more to discuss about that, much like the fireworks as time goes on. Those folks down there have done a ton of work with something that I don't think they've ever been faced with before, and so I give them great, great kudos. And, you know, the financial impact of this is going to be fairly significant, and Councilwoman Espendola and I will be instrumental in, you know, figuring a solution or a path through that. We continue to have discussions with project home key possibilities, and in fact, we have another meeting tomorrow, and so there are some things that are going on with potential sites for project home key. I believe the application period is in October, so this isn't something that's imminent. However, the opportunity to sit with the county and the other stakeholders continues, and I think that'll be fruitful for us. Attended a ribbon cutting at Electronic Playground, a new business in the city, I think every week, we've got one or two of these now, and it's exciting to see that folks are interested in investing in their business within our city, and there's quite a buzz going on with those things. As far as the parade, having been at the very first one and not missing too many of them, I think this was probably the highest attendance that I've ever seen, and it posed a bit of a logistical problem at the hot dog lines, but all those that were involved, definitely, including the people that were seeking hot dogs, all were very patient, and so as Councilwoman Espendola mentioned, it seemed like all departments down there were well represented, but I especially appreciate the guidance of our Parks and Rec Department and the partnership, and the fire department for a lot of their folks who came in just for the parade, they weren't, they were going to end up having to work that night, which we've heard has been busy, but to all the departments, because everyone was represented, my thanks. I did not get a chance to attend the regional fireworks show this year, but from what I gather, it went off well, and it was well-attended. And as far as the city manager's discussion about the aerial fireworks that are going off in our city, at least in District 2, Northwest Yuba City War Zone, it was phenomenal what was happening. In fact, at one point, my wife came in with a handful of debris from aerial fireworks, which, if you're an ex-fire chief, that's not something you really want to see. So, you know, I'm at a loss, I'm sure we're going to give a lot of discussion to this, you know, a lot of people seeking solutions, I don't know what the solution is, and I'm hopeful that we can find it. I do know one thing, is we are not alone as a city within the state of California with this problem, and I got to hope that at some point, we can curtail in what's going on, because it, in this particular case, there were three structure fires. That doesn't typically happen. We have little vegetation fires here and there, but unfortunately, there was some property loss. So it will be an item for this council to continue to work arm-in-arm with our police department and our fire department, and hopefully some community stakeholders as well, and we talk about getting the community involved. This isn't something where we can wave a magic wand, call in the National Guard and post them up in each cul-de-sac and just write tickets, something else, I mean, it's going to take something else to deal with this. With that, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, and turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Between attending the Intergovernmental Relations Committee and the Homelessness Task Force, it just highlights, for me, the commitment that this city council has to addressing, and hopefully coming to some kind of a resolution with our homeless problem. I mean, and it's exciting to see the community engagement in this process. And having said that, with the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, we spoke about that in addition to strategies for attracting businesses to our area, and the need for maybe even a regional hospital. So there's different ideas that are being thrown around. In the Homelessness Task Force, we're getting to the point where we're going to narrow down potential sites, but right now, we're looking at the rules of what the overnight parking is going to look like when we have one. So that's exciting to be a part of. Mentioned before, we have had several ribbon cuttings in our city, which is exciting to be a part of as well. I was fortunate enough, on a side note, to be included to a Blackbird reunion up in Reno, and those of you know what that is. Back when I was a kid, the SR-71 was stationed at Beale Air Force Base, and it was just, it was, it was, it was a symbol of pride when that thing shook every window in town, because you knew it was stationed right out here, and anywhere else in the world, but it was stationed right out here. And there's not going to be too many more of these reunions left, because most of the participants are in their 80s and 90s, so just being included in that was nice. Yeah, so I would like to, again, say how much appreciation I have to our first responders and how busy they must, they must have been, and they were last night, so a shout-out to them. Lastly, I'd like to give a... Lastly, I'd like to give a Get Well Soon shout-out to our, my cohort over here, Councilman Harris, who's at home not feeling well, and just to let him know that we are thinking about him, and we hope he's back soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before I go into my report, two things that come to mind. The Habu was surreal. The Habu was the, one of the code names for the SR-71s. And then, as far as Councilmember Harris, is there anything we can volunteer him for tonight? So, you know, the person that's not here, you always volunteer them for it. I'm going to keep mine very brief. I've been at, like these, my fellow colleagues here, most everything, from ribbon-cuttings to meetings. The Intergovernmental Relations continues to move forward, and quite honestly, as the vice mayor said, it's really focusing on the community approach more and more to homelessness. And that leads into the Overnight Parking Advisory Committee that we put together, that's been doing great work, and then what you guys have been doing with Home Key, because this is a community problem. Would that give you a brief recap as far as where we're at and where we're going? Because, as we said earlier, doing nothing is not an option. First meeting was kind of the reality. I will never forget one community member going, "I want to hear what you're going to tell us tonight." And I say, "Well, you're going to be greatly disappointed, because this is your meeting. We're here to answer all of your questions. We want you to understand it like we do." And so we've walked through that. So the first one was establishing that there is really the need for this. Revisited that second meeting, were on board, and then went straight into the rules, which was a concern. And the way we laid this out was, doesn't matter where this thing goes. Take that completely out of the equation. We need to design the rules for this overnight parking that will stand the test no matter where it goes. And so they did some great work. So when we have our next meeting, they'll revisit that, make sure they're solid. And then their homework assignment was to start looking at potential locations. So while we took a pause, we've been working our tails off on the backside, trying to bring this forward. So to my colleagues, I also informed the advisory committee that when they're done, it's not our job to bring back what they did. We want them to bring it back, because this is a community advisory panel. So hopefully, sometime in August, by our second meeting there, hopefully, it would be great, because the first one is canceled. We can have them in here, because it's America's Night Out, Robert. So, you can show up, but we're going to be out on the street. So, but anyway, that's our hope, and that way, we can start looking at things going forward. Really, a big shout-out to, as has already been said, but I want to stress this, because a lot of times, you know, when you sit in this chair, you are expected to queue up on the dime and go for it. And, you know, while the parade, I was more worried about not falling off the fire truck. I tried to thank everyone, including, as I called you that day, it's more fitting, former chief, because it started under your watch years ago, and I appreciate that. But what goes unsaid is, beyond just the parades, it gets into what they all dealt with that evening, where they were dealing with all the fires and the everything. Anytime this city does anything, whether it's a response to a tragedy, or whether it's to put on the downtown stroll, or the 4th of July parade, it takes every one of our employees. So I just want to go right now and just say thank you to all of our departments, because you're there, just like I called them earlier, the silent giants in the background. They just make stuff happen. And we can never say thank you enough to all of our departments and all of our team members, because I would spend an hour up on whatever truck or whatever thanking everyone that's involved. But I know this council is very, very appreciative, as you've already heard from others. So please take that back to all your departments, let them know that we realize it takes all 300-plus people to make a difference in this city. And we do take notice, and we are very, very much appreciative of that. So with that, I'm going to move on into an adjournment. This is going to be kind of special and tough tonight, because I don't know if you all noticed, but the council has black ribbons across Uba City. And it's been a tough couple of weeks, as we were talking earlier, in the city and within our community. But tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Hiro Yamada, who's a longtime city employee and friend to many in this community, and Cotton Rosser, who's our local rodeo legend, and as they call him, "King of the Cowboys." There's many others, but tonight, we're going to close in memory of both of these two men. And that's why we wear the ribbons tonight, is we want to show our respects, that we miss them. And with that, I've asked Ms. Langley to take, really, as long as she wants, and talk about Hiro, and, because I know he meant a lot to a lot of people here. And so, Ms. Langley, please.
All right. And Judy is pulling up some pictures of Hiro. So while she's scrolling through the pictures. So Hiromichi Yamada, fondly called Hiro, started with the city in April 2006, working at the help desk in the IT Division. Hiro was with us for 16 years and made friends with everyone. And reflecting back on Hiro, there were so many little things that he did for everyone that showed how much he cared. He would always start the coffee in the morning at City Hall and keep it going throughout the day. It meant a lot to folks coming in on Monday morning to have coffee ready to go. He would also bring donuts in at least one day out of the week. So when you saw that box of donuts in the break room, you knew that Hiro had been there. He would find articles on the internet, typically related to health issues, and post them in the break room. Also, around the holidays, he was known for gifting brandy beans, but one year, he bought an entire pallet of Panatoni bread and gifted it to everyone. He would also laminate items of interest, such as a picture or certificate, and give it to you to keep. He shared that you could use it as a coaster to prevent water stains. And in fact, if you went to his workstation at City Hall or at home, you would find laminated pictures on the wall. Hiro was also a fascinating, well-accomplished man. He spoke seven different languages: Tahitian, Japanese, German, French, Chinese, Hawaiian, and English. And he helped in proofreading our gifts to our sister city, making sure that they were correct and proper to the Japanese culture. Hiro recognized the importance of building relationships and always took the time to make personal contact. The relationships that he made, the people that he met, and the stories he shared are what gave Hiro purpose and a drive to live life to the fullest. We thank Hiro's wife, Madeline, who's here tonight, for sharing Hiro with us all of these years. Hiro was a part of our family, and he will be greatly missed. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. I'm now going to talk about Mr. Cotton Rosser, very briefly. Thinking about what I would say, I actually found something that was written by Susan Canode for behalf of the NFR. So I'm going to read excerpts from what she wrote, because I think she captures the spirit of it. "When we learned of the passing of Cotton Rosser, there was a huge hole felt by so many. Cotton was born in Long Beach, California, in 1928, and I'm sure his parents never dreamed what their son would accomplish. He never wanted to be anything but a cowboy. Cotton got a job at a ranch on Catalina Island when cowboys were called away to fight in World War II. He went to school half-days, cleaned stalls, hauled manure, and got to ride a donkey named Jack. He rode that donkey to deliver newspapers. He started riding bulls when he was 13. Three years later, he was riding saddle bronc horses, too, and eventually competed in all of the rodeo events. After high school, he moved 200 miles north to San Luis Obispo to attend Cal Poly State University. The National Intercollegiate Rodeo Association hosted their first national finals in San Francisco at the Cow Palace Arena. Cotton was among the competitors at that event in 1949, where he placed in four events and was the reserve champion all-around cowboy. When Cal Poly hosted their first NIRA sanctioned event, Cotton won the all-around championship. He was a Cal Poly Mustang for life. In April of this year, Cotton attended a ceremony where they named and dedicated their facilities to him. The list of awards and honors for Cotton is long, but his real reward was his family and friends. In the life that he lived as a cowboy, Cotton said, "I wore this white hat for 60 years after I graduated from Cal Poly. In my business, you don't get rich, but you live like you're rich. Rich with memories? I've got the most best friends and memories in the world. It couldn't get any better than that." After college, Cotton continued to travel and compete, loving and living the life of a rodeo cowboy. He earned the saddle bronc riding title at the Reno Rodeo. He moved to Marysville and was building fence on his property when he got crosswise in a post-hole digger. Two broken legs and a prognosis that did include him competing saw him take up his next chapter of his life, which we know. He bought the Flying E Rodeo Company in 1956, and his focus changed to producing rodeos and entertainment. He was known as the P.T. Barnum of rodeo because of his love for entertaining the crowd. He was always seeking new acts to add to the rodeo, and was an iconic figure horseback in the arena, with that white hat and that quick tip to the fans. When I read that Cotton had tipped his hat one last time, it was the perfect tribute to a man who is known for that. He was one of the most patriotic individuals to ever grace the rodeo arena. He loved his country, he loved his family, he loved the animals and rodeo, and he loved his friends. Cotton took in many young people through the years and gave them the opportunity to see what they were made of. One of those was Bob Tolman. Cotton was instrumental in my career from the start. My first white hat I ever bought was from Cotton's Cowboy Corral at the Cow Palace. Bob has been the announcer at the Reno Rodeo for many years. When they got the news, they immediately planned a tribute. Reno led Cotton's horse around the arena. Boots were backwards in the stirrups. Cotton's chaps and his famous white hat were placed over the saddle horn. They circled around the mares and colts that had become a fan favorite. And Cindy Rosser, Cotton's oldest daughter, and secretary for the Reno Rodeo, was horseback in the arena and held a place with the pickup men. It was just as Cotton would have wanted. He loved those mares and colts, and showcasing a Born to Buck program to the fans. And the P.T. Barnum in him would have said, "The show must go on," and it did in Cotton Rosser fashion. He has made an impact on every person that knew him and many that benefited from just that tip of the hat. Smile or kind word as he was riding one of their many painted horses in the arena. Let's all work to carry on Cotton's legacy, to tip our hats, give a friendly smile, wave, share opportunities, be patriotic, love our lives, and live like Cotton. I had the honor and privilege to ride a couple of stampedes with Cotton, and that was truly an honor. And he will truly be missed. And tonight, I ask two things. I would like the council to continue wearing these ribbons through our next council meeting, in honor of both of these men. And let's pause for a few moments of silence before we adjourn, because they will truly be missed.